I'll now call order the budget work session of Board of Commissioners, the City of Tarpon Springs, on Tuesday, June twenty fifth, two thousand thirteen, at six oh one, roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Flattery here. Mr. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Chapany?
Here.
Mr. Banther?
Here.
I will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. If you have something, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing that we'll go to item number one, general fund budget presentation.
Well, we've done it several ways over the year. What my intention was tonight is to just talk about and overview the two things we're going to deal with tonight, the general fund budget and the CIP. Again, just to give you a general outline of them. Talk about some, some different things in there that's, that's different. It's pretty much you've seen the same budget several years. Commissioner Banther has seen it as part of the Budget Advisory Committee, so we have the advantage of everybody on this board has seen the general fund budget and you're going to see pretty much the same thing. But we're going to just talk about an overview of that and where we're going. Then we'll talk about an overview of the CIP where it stands now. Obviously, the capital improvements, projects is dynamic. It can change year by year. It can change, you know, in the middle of the year. It can change whenever we choose to. A look at how it lines up right now. We'll look at in general what it looks like in the future and what we have. And again, tonight, we're looking for also any input and some information you're going to, you know, want as we get into the budget a little further. Just to go over some of the timeline that we have between now and the next meeting. The next real significant date is July nineteenth when we bring the DR four twenty form to you, to again, set what the maximum that we can, the maximum that we can go to. From my thinking right now, I'm not thinking of bringing you a maximum that's any more than the millage rate that is now five point four or five. I'm not anticipating that from looking at things. Obviously, that's the highest we can go. We're in a strange situation this year because we did go up slightly. And when we know for sure, when officially comes out of July first, it will probably somewhere in the neighborhood of the twenty thousand dollars more in tax money we'd get in from the rate, not major, small. And of course, if you read the articles and saw with the rest of the county, it's a little lower than the rest of the county. But it's a positive and that's something we have not seen. And it's a positive with a good future. As I tell people, you know, we're not that far off some of the other places. Some of the places have a lot of commercial, like Oldsmar and that had an advantage because with their commercial, that's what brought theirs higher than ours. But from, I'm sure Karen will be able to tell you and everybody from what we're seeing, being anywhere in the positive is a good sign. And it may equate to only twenty thousand more if we stay at the same millage rate, but that's still twenty thousand is a positive, not a hundred, two hundred thousand or further to the negative. So that's a real good sign in changing up the people who are inquiring, acquiring and developing and coming here and, you know, improving their business as we see all over. Then hopefully, we're at the upswing and we can, you know, move towards a positive direction. So that's what I anticipate now. Again, obviously, we'll have all the way till September if we want to, if we want to lower that. But I don't anticipate bringing you any increase in millage when we come back to present that form. That would be the highest that I would say we'd submit and then we work where we do among the budget and see where we, we end up. We will be in, in the general fund budget in July, the Budget Advisory Committee. And lastly, that's why I'm talking about in general tonight with the general fund budget. Obviously, in the past, we've gone department by department to go through things. But on July eleventh, and I believe the July twenty fifth, your Budget Advisory Committee, which is the committee your citizens as you put, will be going and meeting with every department head and going fine line through the general budget that this commission has done in the past. I think one of the purposes to bring that committee on was to do some of that and hear from the public and go through there. So obviously, we can do some of that tonight if there's some general concerns, but we will, all the departments will be going through that. And that budget committee is, is very thorough and we do a good job working together, finding some things we might have missed, some areas and stuff. And so we'll be doing that, those two weeks before we come back to you, July thirtieth. July thirtieth is where we come back to you. So we will have two sessions, two two-hour sessions with the Budget Advisory Committee actually going through mostly this general fund budget. Again, going through the little pieces. They're looking at it now and we'll be going thoroughly through this to bring, bring back to you. And then, so we will meet again to discuss the budget on the thirtieth. And then we've got the third workshop set for, for, we have two dates, August eighth and August twelfth, both of them as needed. If we just need one, the other one won't be. If for some reason we get done the thirtieth, we get done the thirtieth. The three dates are July thirtieth, August eighth, and August twelfth. Again, the last two are tentative dates and depending where we are in the process. And of course, we have the September where we have the two, two public hearings. So that's pretty much where we are there. The first thing I want to hand out, you know, some of these things you already have in the book, but I, there's some new things I just want to hand this down. This is some of the work on the budget that's been done so far. These are some things taken out. And why I want to bring your attention to them is I may come back later. If, if you look at the top, these are some things I've cut out of the budget. But I've put them in this area because obviously, we are going to be involved in possibly selling the nursing home property. Why I'm holding these out is a lot of them are some necessary things to do with buildings, to do with lands, to do with Craig Park. Some of the things, there are a couple trucks in there, but there are some involved with projects that have to be done on city property. So I'm not sure I'm bringing all these to you, but there is a possibility you will be seeing these and some additional ones if we are successful and we get a good price for that nursing home. These are some things that while they're taken out of the budget to try to keep the budget at a good place millage wise and reserve wise, these may be things I come back to you and say to dedicate that sale if it goes through to some of these items. This is the start of that list. Obviously, you go through scrutinizing, yes, no, good plan, not good plan. But that's why I kind of separate them to give you a chance to look at some. Include things like the city clerk's new record room. Anybody who's been in the dungeon in the back of us know that's kind of a necessity. That's the price doing a lot of it in-house. We're hoping we can keep that, that's obviously kind of a low price, but you know, doing some in-house, some not. We still haven't decided where that's going to be located. There's a possibility next to there. We're still looking at those things. But right now, that we're looking at them. Some replacement lighting at both Dorset Field and Rotary Park. You know, we were lucky enough to obtain the one grant because it was ready to go at the sports complex, but those two were not ready. They need due polls. They need, they were not a ready-to-go project that we could have got to go. So that wasn't in the grant to do the Craig Park restrooms. Anybody who's been there knows obviously, we need to work on some things. Couple trucks and some paving though, some parking lots of city properties. So that's kind of set aside now. It's out of the budget that was in there along with some other things we may talk about. But I just want you to see them, keep them in the back of your mind because I may, again, have a plan and want to talk to you about something later with those. The, the bottom part is pretty much I went through, if we remember the exercise several years ago and sort of stepped my steps through the budget and see if I could find anything in there to take out before I got to you. So these items are not taken out of your budget as it is now. These were done after you got the budget. So these were some things scrutinizing, going through every department that I took out again before we get to the Budget Advisory Committee and we work on going through the individual items of the budget further. I went through again and took some things out of the budget and that's the list. It was like that one exercise we did here. I think we went three hours and got about thirty something thousand out. I went about a whole afternoon and a little bit more and I could only get forty-four out right now. But that was the first stab at it. But the reason to note these, again, they, they're still in your book. But you know, when you get your next book, when you get the final book in July, then they'll be out. Or if there's anything else that comes up between time or anything we talk about tonight, or we come up with anything else that'll be added to this to, to be taken on. The second thing, you've got this in your book, but just for the sake of tonight, just to go in through the book and look at our... This is our capital. Mainly, pretty much when you go through the general fund budget, what you're going to see that's different are these capital items in each of the departments. Those were some of the things that I took out up top that I talked to you about. So these are some items that are still in, are still in our budget, in the capital items, that haven't been taken out yet. Whether they're taken out and add to that list that you have on the first page, whether they're taken out and just taken out for another year, that's something we'll decide during the course. But again, if you have some questions tonight especially, you know, again, something that you're seeing that's not the same from other years' regular budget. Obviously, some, some capital projects are, are the difference of this year's and last year's budget. So in looking through some of these things, that again, you see in every department, that's something you may want to discuss later. And so... The other doc, the other documents, the begin, are just from drafts of some of our gas funds and stuff. This is just a draft. We just had that information and I decided to give that to you. And the last page, we'll talk about two because that's our, that's our one cent local auction sale tax. That's, that's the second part of this meeting. So we'll put that aside and we'll discuss that a little bit later when we get into it. So again, again, those capital items are pretty much the difference in the, the budget you've seen. Is there anything else preliminarily you can think of? Are there any information that we've got lately that we need to let them know before we talk a little more?
I just wanted to point out, just below the top section, there's some additional revenue when we got that June first estimate. We recalculated it. It went up small now.
The twenty-two thousand, eight forty-five.
Correct. And that's not included in the book.
Oh, I think I missed that one. Not likely to miss the English. Then of the new handouts, the only thing I want to hand to you is this is something that we're not ready to discuss tonight, but we gave it to the Budget Advisory Committee. When I give it to you, one thing that is not in this budget yet is the salaries and the salary and...
Glad I didn't hear what you said.
Salary, the, you know, any raises or stuff that is not in here yet. We are still working on it. But this is, this is how about the presses from a couple of weeks when we met from the Budget Advisory Committee. It may be updated because obviously, the data comes from around the states and some of the data comes in slow. The only reason I'm giving this to you is to look over in the next month because probably when I come, we come back in a month, we'll have a proposal which will add to the general fund about, you know, some ideas of what we want to do for raised employees. I won't tell you simply when you look at this, you'll see that we've gotten behind. We expected it. We knew we'd been drifting and we're behind. It's pretty certain from our meeting with the city managers that we have every month and we went around the table last time, most everybody is, is giving between two and three percent raises this coming year. So even to stay even at being behind, you know, we would have to look at, at something like that. So we've got some challenges to look at, you know, where we are, what monies we have, anything else we can squeeze out of the budget and look at, you know, what type of compensation plan that we can do to, to compete. There will probably be some different changes. I know we've identified some jobs that are way out of whack. I mean, when you look at here, you'll see some that are way off. And there's, there's some individual ones we have to address, but you know, believe me, we have to address the, everybody. And we'll be working over that over the next month and hopefully, bring that back to you. So I want a chance, Budget Advisory Committee are looking at this. I want a chance to you, you to look at it and have it to look at before the, the next meeting. Pretty much that's an overview as far as the general fund budget. If, if we've got questions, we've got most of ours. Department heads here. If there's anything that you've seen so far in the general fund budget that you have some questions about with the individual departments, we can, we can have them come up and ask the questions of them. Any questions of, of area that you've seen so far. Again, this budget is still in a dynamic process, working on it. So anything you have now or things you want us to look at before we meet again on the budget, I'm open to there and, you know, just talk to the board on this item.
So looking at this in terms of moving forward, what's your, I guess, wishes as far as, you know, looking at this, I guess, just briefly tonight, but then as we go forward, what's your thoughts in terms of the next meeting, the plan in terms of...
My thoughts is that we, we talk about anything, obviously, to give you the overview, which we have, then talk about anything that the commissioners have seen so far in the general, something that stands out, something they want to have the question on. As an overview, again, we're going to be meticulously in two budget advisory meetings going line by line. Each of the department heads over the area to look to see if we can add to the list I've given you of what's been taken out of this budget. And by the time we come to you in July to the next meeting, we'll have the final list of what we have taken out from those two meetings with the Budget Advisory Committee. And if we've had a future departmental meetings to do, we'll probably have you the salary, salary proposals to look at. And then you'll have a final picture of what the budget looks like and, you know, what's your ideas on. But, but basically, if anybody from what they've seen so far. And again, you've, in this budget, only got, have six months of this year, I think six months to have of this year's to look at. So if there's anything that stands out, any questions that we need to address tonight or we need to definitely be ready for when we come back to you and we really get into the meat of the budget of the next meeting, let us know or to ask some questions now of some of the department heads to go through.
Well, you know, from my perspective, I could still lot of changes from the last year's budget. The actuals, it's hard to look at as far as from my perspective because I'm not sure, you know, what's going to be spent or what, I believe that will be spent going forward. And so we got, we got March, but we've got still another six months. And whether, you know, most of the time budgets are not in equal proportions in terms of, you know, what you're spending every month. Sometimes the latter months and a lot more monies are used than in the prior months. So it's hard for me to tell where we're at and what we believe that's going to be spent going forward. So I don't know if there's any questions that we have, questions to turn to.
Thank you. I just have a quick question about, I see in our capital improvement plan, we're replacing a lot of trucks with some, you know, I understand the benefits of having a more efficient truck versus a truck that would continue to sink money and it's less efficient. My question is, what is the process when we sell a piece of equipment? Whether it be a truck or a tractor, you know, golf cart or anything along those lines?
Usually, through Mr. Jackson first and we put them out for auction. What is, do you remember the name of who we use for the?
It's GovDeals.
GovDeals.
GovDeals?
They, they handle just government surplus.
Mm-hmm. And then, so we send ten trucks to an auction I send? And then we get money for those trucks? And then where does that money go?
It goes back into the funds that it came out of. If it was purchased in general funds, the money goes back into the general fund. You'll see it under scrap sales or excess equipment.
Is that something you could point out?
And if it, if it was spent inside a penny fund, the money has to go back in there. If it's an enterprise fund, it has to go back.
Okay. So is that, is that in the, on the same, that's obviously in the, in the budget? Where the money goes back in, right?
We don't, we don't budget it because we don't know how much will be owed in one year that it'll show up as additional revenue.
Would you like a list of like the recent taxes or something?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that I've been curious about, you know, over the years is because, I mean, I know we replaced the trucks and obviously, we sell the old ones. So, you know, if we just had an idea of where that money was going, I think it'd be beneficial because I'm, you know, if you sell ten trucks or you sell a tractor, I mean, that could potentially be, you know, generous sum of money.
And we can get that list for you and get it.
Thank you.
A lot of times, by the time we sell them, there's not much is to most anybody else. A lot of the equipment they keep a long time. And it also depends on how much it's costing to maintain and if it's starting to cost.
Oh, yeah. I understand why we sell them. I'm just curious what the money, what the numbers look like of what we're getting in return for what we're selling.
We can do it. It's forever.
Thank you.
And also, I know we got to prepare this for the Budget Advisory Committee, but the ones that are left in here right now, what we could do to help is give you a list, what's the year, what's the mileage and stuff of the ones we're replacing in here, why we're replacing them. Probably some of these have been cut every year. I'm just the manager. And I think that would help you too, showing you that the ones that are left in here.
I mean, if you're, I'm not necessarily asking for that. I'm not trying to micromanage why we're selling, what we're selling, anything like that. But if you're going to generate that for the Budget Advisory, I'd be trying to like...
Yeah, we'll give you a copy of that to me also.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. My first question was going to be about if we were going to be receiving extra revenue this year for taxes. So we're at twenty-two, eight forty-five right now. That's extra tax revenue. So that's up to June. Is that what you said?
It was, it was...
Or not a tax, I think it was first, it's additional and then... Additional. So, so we're expecting more through?
We'll get another one Monday.
Okay.
So, and that'll be the final that when we come to you in July and we have to file the, the DR four twenty and the TIF and maximum millage forms, we'll come and we'll have a better idea then.
Okay. But it's good to see that it's, that it's going up. That's positive.
Another positive.
Hopefully, if there's any change at all, it's more positive.
Right. And my only other question is, I always have a question about the, the police department with the forfeiture funds. Like, what can we purchase with those? Because I see like we have TASER replacements. Is that things that we could purchase with forfeiture funds?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, what was, Vice Mayor, what was your question?
Um, when it comes to the forfeiture funds that you have, you know, we bought that Command Central and all that.
Correct.
What, can we, is, I see on here that we're looking to replace maybe radios or TASER replacements. Can, can those items be bought with forfeiture funds?
Um, yes and no. Right now, our forfeiture money is starting to dwindle. So we have to basically use our regular capital money in general fund to purchase those items this year. We, we've spent a lot of money in forfeiture over the last three or four years on some really big capital items. Normally, you cancel plant, your normal budget. You could do upgrades or certain things you could buy in forfeiture, but those funds are really starting to get low and we need to start to let them build up again.
And she asked like the TASERS. Is, is the test still, it needs to be, if you have a TASER, it's the last device, you got to replace it. You can't replace it with that money up there. Advancement, you can replace it with, with...
If it's an upgrade, right.
Only, okay. So, so there's stipulations?
Right.
Okay.
It's a TASER, it's a TASER now.
Right.
I don't know, the recent examples, son, we were able to use because it was, it was upgraded. So it was, it was, in essence, a different item, a new item as opposed to a replacement. They'll buy the initial ones, but you have to replace the same thing that's not allowed by the regulations of forfeiture. That's why TASERS didn't know, it's still zaps you about the same way. So, you know, there's no...
You've got to be, we're all under by the federal government every year. So you really, normally cannot supplant your regular budget, but we can do capital items that are never budgeted for. And we can do upgraded items. So they normally will be an upgrade that we can go forfeiture on. But you got to be real, real careful not to supplant.
Right. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of questions. I noticed there's a relatively large number of computers being purchased. I think this year, the cost on the computers is sixteen hundred each. I think in previous years, it was a higher number. So I'm glad that it's, that it's brought down a little bit. I'm wondering what the process is for determining which computers need to be replaced if it's simply based on the age of each computer or if it's more of a case-by-case basis depending on the functionality required of those computers?
Generally speaking, the driving force is age. We have roughly a hundred and fifty desktop computers that are managed out of IT. You get roughly five years out of them. So you're going to be looking at a replacement of roughly thirty a year. That's about what we've been averaging. The computers, for example, that are budgeted this year are, have been out of warranty for over a year now. So by the time we purchase them roughly this time next year, perhaps a little bit earlier, you know, you'd be looking at two plus years beyond their warranty. And obviously, the technology itself changes pretty dramatically, as you imagine, in that time as well.
So of the ones that we're buying, was it entirely age-based or are we looking at them to determine whether or not they can continue to operate? Whereas the fact that they're beyond their warranty, is that a big part of the equation?
It's a combination. The units that are being replaced this year were all purchased back in oh nine. So the technology alone makes them outdated, less productive. They become cumbersome. It happens to be this particular year, it's the first year that we'll be looking at, well, second year actually, that we'll be looking at a little longer warranty. So maybe go into a five, perhaps a little longer than a five-year cycle. But with the type of systems we buy, they're fairly robust. We do have a lot of what are called power users in the city. And after you get five years into a system, it, it becomes fairly obsolete in today's, you know, today's environment, IT environment.
Thank you. I was also wondering what assumptions are in the budget in terms of increases in healthcare, costs of gas, whatever, whatever, whatever other moving targets there are. I'm just wondering what we're using for those assumptions?
The health insurance is ten percent. The gas, I think ethanol is three seventy-five and diesel was four dollars.
Trying to, are there any other, what other assumptions are, are in the budget?
The power, Harbor's Energy said five to seven percent. So we budget seven because we don't want to be caught short. But again, that depends on, I guess, the utilities commission approving. Water and sewer already has approved rates. The water is nine point seven five and the sewer is three percent.
And that's not a moving target? That's...
No, that's, that's definite.
Okay.
It's an ordinance that's already established.
Thank you. Throughout the budget, on the page that shows salaries, there's a line, on page four, for example, it'd be line twenty-nine, it says salary benefit increase. I'm, I'm just trying to understand why that's not just listed as part of, why it's not listed under the salary, why there's a separate line that says salary benefit increase?
Because usually, it's approved after the book is put together. So, and it's always based on evaluations being successfully completed by the employees. So it's not a guarantee if performance is not satisfactory. So we, we calculate what the amount is for the whole department. So, we, we calculate what the amount is for the whole department, and it's added together and put on that line. And then depending, um, on what happens during the year, it'll-
So, that line's always in there? I didn't remember that from previous years, yeah? Thank you.
Some years, we didn't have any increases, so I, that line might have not showed up.
Gotcha, okay. Um, does this budget include funding for the homeless leadership board and also for the, uh, State Harbor facility? I didn't see it in there, Mr. Corrus.
Good course.
It, it may have been in there, I just, I didn't notice it.
It's an oversight.
It should be used back in, uh, non-departmental, I thought.
That's correct.
It's not fully intended to propose those things.
It, it may be there, I, I may have missed it, but that's where I had looked in the very best. There's a line, uh, line eighty-three on page one fifty-four that says other grants and aid. I wasn't sure if maybe that's for this, but there's no, uh, explanation or justification of that line. Well, and that line couldn't be it because-
It was in this last year.
Yeah, because it's not in there this year. So, that couldn't be it, well.
I, I do not see it, and that's an oversight, it will be added.
Okay. Um, also, I noticed, uh, the city attorney retainer, um, for the proposed budget is lower than last year. I wasn't sure if there had been a new agreement with the city attorney?
When they did the, the new agreement, they actually lowered, it, it was up around seventy-six thousand, and they lowered it to six thousand a month or seventy-two thousand a year. I don't know if that was the intention, but that's what the-
Okay, I didn't remember if the, the retainer had gone down, okay.
I was surprised.
Very good. Um, I've got some other questions. Come, come back to me. That's, that's it for now.
Uh, Commissioner Baffert.
Thank you. Um, uh, and, and so, is the overall tax revenue, and I'm looking on, on page one, um, includes current delinquent, water, natural fuel, et cetera. So, we're going up around three, three hundred thou- thou- thousand dollars from, uh, from last year?
Um, it's actually less than that.
I'm, I'm, I'm just looking under the tax portion, the very first, in the general fund.
Total category?
Yeah, under taxes.
Okay.
I, I just, I see that's a positive thing, obviously, for collecting more, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm reading that correctly.
Yes.
So, last year, we didn't have a jump of three thousand dollars. This is an improvement from the-
Some, some of the things, um, are, are coming in higher this year, um, than they did last year.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then, um, 'cause I noticed things like, and pardon me, being new probably, um, things like, um, uh, carryover, you go on, on the one, over on, on the page three now. Um, have the tree banks went down for carryover and the perpetual care, can you explain those to me, please?
Um, the money that you see in carryover is money that is in an assigned or restricted category. And, um, perpetual care would be, like, um, in the current year, we were paying for the new fencing around the cemetery. That was taken out of perpetual care and shown as a carryover.
Okay.
If there's a project for, um, the tree bank,
Mm-hmm.
um, one, one of our park projects, and we're using trees, we will take money out of the tree bank, um, restricted account as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, uh, for the IT department, um, are we doing the, these suggestions that the auditor suggested, if I, if I caught up with them when, when they, when they came before us? There were some things with a server room that I, I guess, for several years have been- Uh, no issue or something?
Uh, yeah, there was, uh, some, uh, recommendations by our external auditor, and we are in negotiations with the company. It's under state contract to do those tasks in conjunction with, with our staff. I believe there was four tasks identified, and, uh, those will be done here. Our goal is to get them wrapped up before the end of this fiscal year, so September thirtieth of this year.
Are we gonna hire an IT director and staff, or?
We, we've created three positions, an IT supervisor and IT specialist. I'm, uh, fairly pleased to announce we have hired an IT supervisor who begins on Monday, so.
Oh, very good then.
So, we're excited she'll have an opportunity to assemble a team of her, uh, two staff members and prepare them forward from there.
Okay, thank you. And also, again, just make sure that I'm reading this correctly, under the city attorney portion, um, litigation went up, unless I'm just reading that incorrectly? Just wondering if there was any reason for that? Obviously, there is.
The rates a- actually have, um, gone up, the, the contract included, I think it's a ten dollar a year increase until they, I think the top rate is a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour, which is still low. Standards outside of the city.
And then just, and just in general speaking, in, um, in conversations with the, 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 the firefighters on several occasions, they had brought the, the issue, and I was, I was unaware of this till this past spring, that we have no boat for the fire department or, or the police department to use, is that correct, is that?
Yeah, and you'll see it, where is that, is it, is it what we're gonna talk about next? Is it in the, uh, I believe it's in item two, you'll see it in the, the one cent, yeah.
It's in the staple thing, we're just-
You'll see it, as, when we talk about item two, the, uh, one cent, uh, sales tax, penny fund, so we'll talk about that, you'll see that.
So, that, that's on our radar, obviously, and, uh, yeah.
It's on there for next year, if you, we'll just, you just turn to that page, you'll, you'll see it, uh. And again, it says fire rescue boat, but it'll be the capabilities of either-
Oh, yeah, I wanted to have dual capabilities of police and, I know firefighters, they might have some more, you know, things they need, the one that both departments can use. I think the, um, fire on, on the, on the sponge dock, waiting for a colored beast to show up for, for three hours is just rather embarrassing to our men that are out there, uh, firing those fires and protecting the streets. So, I'm very glad to see that, that, that's in there. And I'll be interested as well to see what the budget, um, as, 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 as the committee's doing. At the same meeting place upstairs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And again, that is, those meetings are open to the public, and they're Thursday, two o'clock, you know, be the July eleventh and July twenty-fifth.
Is it different than usual, or is it just the same as always going through line by line? Is it, it seem more strict this year?
It's, no, it's pretty much gonna be, it's department by, I wouldn't say line by line, because we have been up here and done line by line.
Yeah.
But it's department by department, so they'll, uh, you know, the department head will be there, and they'll go any, obviously, some lines will be no questions on, but they'll just go to the points where they have and cover each department, all of their lines together and stuff. So, um, pretty much how we did, how we did last year.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Loz. Thank you, again. Um, I wanted to make a, I guess, a request for information in regards to the recreation division. Uh, I think it was last year during budget time that I made a comment, uh, wondering if we were underfunding our recreation division. And I knew last year probably wasn't the time to try to add staff, and I'm not sure if we're there now or not. Um, what I'd like to do, though, is, uh, throughout this budget process, get some additional information in terms, and I think at some point, some kind of study was done. I think Mr. Smith has, uh, given statistics before, in terms of the number of employees in the recreation division, um, per resident within a municipality. Uh, if I remember correctly, we're, we're dramatically lower, uh, than some of the surrounding municipalities. So, I think that's something, uh, that should be on our radar at this time. Uh, so if we could get information about that, that would be useful. And then on a related note, um, I'd like to get kind of a long-term, uh, vision for the, the community center on Walton. Um, whether or not it's, what, what the timeline is, whether or not it's adequate for, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years down the road? If that's something that we need to have kind of on, on our radar as well, whether there need to be improvements to that facility, or if we need to be thinking about a, uh, a new facility at some point in the future. Uh, I also wanted to talk a little bit about the, uh, the idea of the rescue boat, but it sounds like we're gonna hold off on that until the next agenda item, because we're, is that correct?
Yeah, when, when you look at the penny for panel, uh, outlook and stuff, we'll look at all the items that are for the next five years, I think it is, uh-
All right, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions? If not, then we'll go through our next, uh, item on the agenda, which is, uh, C I P, et cetera. Um, as you see on the last page of the one handout I gave you, I'm not sure where it is, it's in there, but, I mean, we're gonna be discussing it tonight. Um, you see from, from fiscal year two thousand fourteen through fiscal year two thousand eighteen, where our projects lie out as a balance again. I remind you, it's a dynamic process, although we do it once a year, it can change mid-year, it can change yearly, it can change pretty much any time if there's a project that comes up, if there's some adjustments that need to be made. Um, this is, is pretty much how it's laid out and looked at right now, um, what's gonna happen. Obviously, you have to remember, if there's additional money, for instance, in two thousand fourteen, um, as you see, we are very ambitious on our projects in, in two thousand fourteen. Um, but at the end of that, if we do them all, um, we still have two, you know, two million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand that carries over and begins the next year. And as you can see down the line, you'll see how much money we spend, how much money we've got left, and, you know, obviously, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen doesn't have many projects in there left, so while it looks like we've got three and four and a half million there, obviously, as the years go by, you will be adding projects to that section. And, uh, as you can see, we're pretty healthy, and we've got room to, to do additional things as we see needs, as we, as we, you know, have opportunities to do projects, we can do that. Right now, um, again, going through the line, as you can see, for two thousand fourteen, um, that is the, these are the projects we're looking at doing next year. They include such things as, obviously, we know the OX project is, is coming. It includes, um, the construction of, uh, Eleanor Boulevard, which is the road for our water plant. Um, our city hall improvements, which we'll go into probably a little more detail later, um, with the study of what's needed. Um, and if we really wanna stay in this building, which I do, I have no plans to bring forward to you to build a new city hall anywhere, but to stay in this building, we've got some major changes we have to do pretty fast. Um, and we've had consultants look at it, we've looked at it, and that's a major, um, project that we will be doing this year, and we'll have that whole breakdown and everything for you later time. As you see, the fire rescue boat i- is, is in there, um, see some other highlights. The two playgrounds we're doing next year are North Ankle Park and Riverside Park. And, uh, again, pretty ambitious projects, again, that you, and then you look at the projection for the next years going out and stuff, um, that's pretty much where money, the one thing, one thing that we have been working on and is not included, because we don't have a lot of the information, is, um, Mr. De Pasco's been heading up, looking, um, at a project to dredge Sunset Beach, the boat ramp area. Um, obviously, as we all know, for past projects on dredging, that is a tedious process, that we have to go through a lot of regulatory. Um, we have been doing that, um, and it's something we, as you know, will be, in fact, I think, Tom, just shake your head, it's that the floating dock is real close, we've got that contract signed for the improvement of the Craig Park ramp. Um, there are also maybe some other improvements from parking in Craig Park that we may work at and bring to you later for the boat parking and some ideas. Um, you know, there's a parking lot we may be looking for achieving close to there, so there's other things in the work for Craig Park, but another important thing is enhancing that boat ramp at Sunset Beach. We all know it's filled in completely, um, and at low tide, you can't get out. Um, a lot of our arguments that Mr. De Pasco's been making, obviously, the boats now have to go damage the seagrass and other things the way it is now, so we are saying to the regulatory people, you know, please help us and give us a timeframe to, to do this, because we will be enhancing the environment, not hurting the environment, if we have that capability, um, to launch there, and the boats not having to go damage some of the other areas. So, that's not included on here, but that's when you say in the future, when we, when we know better from the meetings with all the regulatory people and, uh, looking at what we need to do. Um, that's something that's not on this list, but I wanted to note that it's something that, uh, that we have been working on for a while, and, uh, began a long project, you know, especially the, a project at the beginning, but, um, that's another thing we're working on. So, if there's any questions, any, anything on here, we see, obviously, again, the dynamics to change this, to add projects, to adjust it is, uh, constant throughout the year, so, um, it's to your pleasure.
The, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, for the, uh, recreation quarter, is that gonna be for the flash park?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Um, that's for the whole thing, or there's part of it, uh?
It's part of it, it's in the, the, uh, Recreation Impact Fund as well, from one thirty-three, it's on a, another page in there.
And again, we're also, it's, it's possibly a kayak canoe launch, it's, it's a whole thing for that horse style.
Okay, uh, the, uh, one thing I, I, I hope that we can look at, I had, uh, some young people ask me about the Trentwood, um, Village, um, um, I thought, thought a lot, places where I was, they, they felt that, uh, that could be some improvements, um, to ensure that it would be, um, one that they would utilize more, so if we could, um, look at that. Uh, the, uh, the funds that are here for, um, Dorset Park, is that gonna be, uh, improvement of the lighting statue or just the, um, resurfacing for the tennis court?
That's the, that's just the resurf- obviously, the light, if you saw those, that's up in this group here, that's part of the package that I'm gonna propose to you later, that if we have a successful sale of the nursing home, that that's one of the projects on city lands and stuff, that we dedicate some of that money towards, uh, the replacement of both Dorset Park and Rotary Field, because both the lighting systems need to be replaced.
Well, this is just that the tennis court is-
Oh, this, yeah. Yeah, this is, this is putting the tennis co- from the sinkhole in the problem, this is the money replacing it to, to form it was before.
So, that would include the, uh,
Yes.
the lights there?
Yes.
Um,
and again, hopefully, some people that they ask, if they continue to ask, you know, obviously, we've been waiting to make sure the land is settled. We didn't wanna go right back in and repave it if there's further occurrences, so I know it seems like a long time, but it's not because we didn't come in and, and replace it right away, but we wanted to make sure we had no other issues, no other sinkholes, and, uh, really give enough time to not completely repave it and stuff and have it fall in again.
Well, my thought was, and the reason I asked is that, we're gonna go in and do it, let's go ahead and do it, because it's been slowly deteriorating over a period of time anyway, so, uh, we're gonna get in, uh-
It was close to do it, it, it was close to doing anyway, so.
Um, which way did I start? I think I started that now, I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Baffert, the evidence.
Uh, no, the fire boat was my main concern, so I was, my colleague, uh, uh, you know, have to say, thanks.
The evidence?
Yes, I do, thank you. Um, I do have a couple of questions on this agenda item, but I'm also wondering if I can cheat and go back to a general fund question? Um, Mr. De Pasco had mentioned, uh, the information technology supervisor assembling a team of two, per total of three in that division. On page twenty-six in the budget, I see a total of two employees, I'm wondering if I'm looking at the wrong spot.
No, no, you're in the right spot, Commissioner, um, two of the positions are funded out of the general fund, one of them you'll see is only a half of the salary. One and a half positions are funded out-
One and a half positions are funded elsewhere. You'll see a full IT specialist position funded out of, I believe, water sewer, non-departmental area, if I'm not mistaken.
Now, the, uh, the specialist here.
Yeah, one of the specialists and half of one of the other positions, which you're seeing there is one and a half positions in the general.
Okay, because that, that also answers another question, I had wondered if the salary was too low for that position, you're saying it's half?
Yeah, when we, when we did the reorganization in March, you may recall, because all three positions are vacant, we budgeted, we recommended budgeting them at the midpoint, and that would represent half of the midpoint, the actual salary will be based upon the salary of the person that's actually hired, the actual salary once they're hired.
Okay, thank you, you're very welcome.
And you'll be, there'll be several places, I remember when, when a commissioner thought I was really underplaying Michelle Manusa. Um, and when you look at it, oh, yeah, but her money, she's funded from town functions in about five different budgets, or you'll see his.
It'd be nice, I don't know how it could be done exactly, it'd be nice in the budget if there could be like a little asterisk or something to notate, uh, that somebody is paid in, in different departments.
Yeah.
Because sometimes it, it does look like somebody has a much lower salary than they really do.
Yeah.
Or, or they have all of those that are funding, have a list for you, you have multiple sources at one place without, you know, all of it to tell us, or, you know, either way, you know.
I think it, um, we have a page that we have in the formal budget book that shows that, um, maybe we could add that to one of the additional pages in this when we do the.
That'd be, that'd be useful.
Okay.
Um, and then I also wanted to ask regarding the, the fire rescue boat, uh, first of all, I'm wondering if seventy-five thousand dollars is, is enough to, to get a boat that has the capabilities that we need. And then related to that, uh, I, I think I'm hearing that this is something that would be shared by police and fire, and if that's the case, I'm wondering, and it sounds like maybe there's not a lot of forfeiture money available, but I'm wondering whether or not that's something where some portion of it could be paid for with, uh, forfeiture money.
Uh, good question, Commissioner, if you want to see your chief brought away in hand, touched by the FBI, we can't share that with the fire department if we use forfeiture money.
Gotcha, cannot be shared at all. And then, Mr. Coors, I'm not sure who knows the answer to this, is, is seventy-five thousand dollars adequate to get the, the kind of boat that we would need, to have the functionality that we would need?
Um, Chief Butcher's not able to be here tonight, but we can get him to have that answer for you, what he's looking at and, uh, actually, you know, get the pricing what he'd look at, um. I'm trying to remember the reason he thought there was a deal available, that the price being lower and stuff, but I can't.
He knows the guy.
But, but we'll get him to, we'll, we'll, we'll get him to do that for you.
Thank you. Uh, and then also, um, regarding the fire station, um, I, I see funding in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen. I, I'm wondering when we're going to open up the fire station, uh, and whether or not we can move that up. I'm wondering what the timeline looks like and whether or not there's a way that we can move it up dramatically sooner. I, I know that response time in that area can be over ten minutes, which is not safe, um, I'm, I'm kind of wondering where we are timeline-wise.
Well, obviously, we've got two dynamics, we've got the water project going on out there also, the beginning to build and, and coordinating with that, we've got the road, you know, the road being built. The other dynamic we have is the EMS mess that we're, as you see from even the new report, you know, let me give you a quick synopsis of the new report, we're probably right back where we started with from the new report we were before, um. So those are some considerations into it, uh, and stuff, and the ability to get some more money to do it, but that is, again, that is a dynamic to look at. Um, and again, what we'd have to look at and give you is the timing of all of those things and, uh, you know, try to firm up that date if it can be sooner or not, um. We hope to have some of those EMS answers by now, but that study didn't give it to us. Um, but now that we've got a firm timeline on the, uh, the water plant, the road and stuff, we can work together on that and see, see where it all works in, and then get back to you at the next meeting on that.
Yes, I'd be good to get additional information on whether or not it's possible to move that up sooner, thank you.
Mr. Tarpenny? Thank you. Um, a few questions, and the, the first beginning with the city marine improvements, I was wondering if somebody could elaborate on what kind of improvements we look, look to do?
Uh, multiple, including the, uh, the restrooms, uh, upgrading the docks, they, of course, they've been in disrepair for a while, so we need to replace some piers and pilings and decking.
So basically, re, all, all new docks, new, new pilings, new deck boards, new stringers.
Yes.
Redo the bathrooms, um, I assume we're going to do a little bit of, I know it's a real sensitive word, dredging.
There will be that, there'll be that small effect that has filtered in.
Right.
That will be a effect.
And that's just, that's a relatively easy permit, because it's more of a maintenance dredge.
Yes, it is, that is correct.
Um. Um, okay, so I mean, it's basically going to be a new facility. Are, are we looking to?
Re, rehabbing the existing one.
What's that?
Rehabbing the existing one, everything, everything in kind, so we'll replace piers in kind, the decking in kind.
Any seawall work?
Uh, seawall, no.
Okay. And now, we're not looking to increase the number of slips, are we?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, sounds good, thank you. And then my other question would be for the, uh, Recreation Impact Fund. Um, I see our, our total sources are nine hundred and fifty-two thousand and change, and the portion expenditures for Saffron Live Oak would be two fifteen, and then projects to be determined would, would be left, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Um, it would not be, obviously, my desire to go to the following year with, you know, beginning working capital of eight thousand dollars, so I'm assuming that if we don't come up with projects for seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, that money would be carried over? Okay.
There you go. See it, um, at the bottom of that column, you'll see the same number in the next year, at the top of the next.
Yeah, I see that. So, so what kind of projects could be determined with this fund? Uh, just recreation solely, or?
Yes, and again.
Has to be recreation.
And it has to be based on growth.
Yes.
Um, that's, you know, again, like the forfeiture money has got criteria for it, that's why you say, oh, why don't we just take a chunk of it and use it towards projects? It's a percent, what is the percentage usually that can be done?
Um, it varies, this, this particular one is thirty-seven percent.
So let's say, you, you mentioned something, Mr. Coors, about, uh, excess parking for a, a boat launch facility. We could use some money from.
It could not be used for that.
Even though that would be based on growth?
But it's not parking, it's not recreation.
Okay. So it would have to be.
That has to be paid out of the ten.
So it would have to be like a toll in your facility?
Yes, but, but not parking.
Yeah, I understand. So where would, how would one be able to identify where there would be a shortage of something based on growth within the community?
Um, there is a comprehensive plan, and in that, there are things identified of what we need per, um, whatever number of, of residents.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, place, sir?
I just have a question, if I could, about the general fund, um, the train depot, I saw an email, uh, not too long ago. Um, do we have it open during the day, or is it, is it strictly by volunteer, or do we have like a part-time employee?
Right now, it's strictly by a volunteer, um, they lost their AARP employee. Um, so what they're going to, I, I can just, what they're going to come, is ask for a part-time position, uh, in, in the, um, CRA fund. Um, we haven't got to that tonight, um, you will see, and again, depending what happens with the project on Tarpon Avenue, um, that we're discussing, the CRA money is pretty tight right now, but, um, they will be asking, I think, I think for a twenty-hour person or nineteen-hour person to help man that. And again, that's one of those considerations where when we get to the CRA budget, we get our numbers a little better as we get into July, towards August, that is going to be one of the things on the list where you see, where there may be others of requests from systems. Another one, another project that we may have, and I don't know if it's going to go on the penny side and the nursing home sale side or what, but there's, there's a need for, uh, uh, shelter at the sports complex, we've talked about the shelter, not only for shade, but for storms that come up into the ball fields and, uh, they're at most places, they provide some, some security when that comes. That's another thing that I think the sports leagues are going to bring to us. And again, that's something that probably can come, not affect the general fund budget, but we will see things like that, that'll be coming for the, as I said, for the CRA budget, we'll see some of those things. So as we go, we'll start seeing some requests that we'll be talking about, um, in the next, next month or two, about if we can place them within, within the budget. So basically, I think we're talking about the CRA salary somewhere in neighborhood, I think, right now, they've heated in the offering, but I think they're going to offer to pay ten percent of the salary, it's gone from thirty to ten, so we'll see when the presentations come, but, um, that's what they're going to be asking for, and again, when we look at our CRA budget, um, hopefully, we're getting close to bringing back to you the proposal for the, for land on Tarpon Avenue and what impact that might have on the CRA, so once we get that deal negotiated and approved, we'll have a better idea on that CRA money when we, you know, bring that deal back to you, so that will be, you, you will be seeing that in the future.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Tarpani?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to ask, not that, I mean, I, I would assume that if we don't spend this money back to the Recreation Impact Fund, that, you know, as the years progress, we could identify other sources for it, but I would just ask that, um, if you could, if you could have the list of areas where there's a deficiency, because that's what it sounds like for growth, that way, this commission could just have an opportunity to look at it, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just looking at what, uh, Mr. Tarpani, uh, had mentioned, and you talked about the, uh, shelter, is that a item mentioned?
Yes, the, for instance, a percentage of, a percentage of the shelter could be paid for with that Recreation money.
Any other questions? Well, I believe that, um, concludes our agenda for this evening. We'll have to continue to work and, uh, see what we can do about bringing this forth, the best, uh, fuzzy part. With that, we will adjourn at, uh, seven thirty-three.